Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order. It's the City Council and Planning Commission Joint Meeting, Special Meeting Study Session, 4:00 PM, June 23rd, 2025. Anthony, may I have the roll call, please?
Sir Leal, City Council First, Councilwoman Hawkins.
Here.
Councilwoman Mollia.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Widmer.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Holland.
Here.
Mayor Lewis.
Here.
Planning Commission, Commissioner Polito.
Here.
Blackson.
Here.
Luekers.
Here.
Although Commissioner Tenelli told us he wouldn't be able to make it today, he is going to join the lovely and participate as a president. Chair Lane.
Here.
Thank you all for being here. Like I said, this is a special meeting, and this portion of the meeting served for persons wishing to address the council on any matter that is on the agenda. And we only have one item on the agenda. So I'd like to welcome anyone from the audience public who may want to speak now. Sir Riddle?
Thank you. Jed Riddle, 97 Frederick Avenue. And I would like to say that I am in favor of tabling the Bay Road and other R10s from this meeting so that it can be considered as to whether or not they're appropriately designated R10s. I would also like to say that I also think it makes good common sense to have an inclusionary fee on all work done on all properties throughout Atherton so that it could be a fund that the town would have to be able to buy properties on the appropriate places to put in low-cost housing. And with that, I would hope that you will be true to your prior comments, that you will work with us to make sure that the appropriate properties are selected for R10s. Thank you.
Much. Any other member of the public like to speak at this time? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council.
Mayor Lewis, can I just one comment, please?
Yes.
So just as a reminder for the public's benefit, this agenda item is a discussion of the proposed Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. And while there is some relation to the housing element, what is not agendized tonight is any amendments to the housing element.
I understand. Is that understood, everyone? Okay, we're keeping to the task at hand. The agenda item is item number one. It's to discuss and consider recommendations on proposed Inclusionary Housing Ordinance and implementation. I'm going to ask our city manager, George Roddick, to tee it up, and then our planner, Brittany, will take it from me.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council and commission. As the mayor mentioned, you're going to be looking at four options for implementing the Inclusionary Ordinance. The first option is, of course, take no action. Relies exclusively on ADU production. It does risk a little concern with Program 3.811 in the housing element, and it eliminates the opportunity to establish an affordable housing fund, as Jed mentioned, should the town choose to create one. Staff does not recommend that approach. The second option confines the ordinance to the RM20 and 40 overlay zones, requiring onsite affordable units at Menlo College, Menlo School, or Sacred Heart. Third option expands the program to include RM10 overlay sites, allowing for either onsite units or in-lu fees. And then the fourth option implements a townwide program that includes single-family development and creates a funding mechanism to support off-site affordable housing. Staff will recommend at a minimum, moving forward, with the RM2040 option to maintain compliance with the state housing mandates and meet the town's affordable housing objectives. As Mona, the city attorney, mentioned, it's important to note that tonight's discussion is limited to the Inclusionary Housing Implementation Program only. The addition or modification of other existing land uses is not agendized, and such discussion would fall outside the scope of the Brown Act. And so hopefully I didn't steal Oliver Thunder. But with that overview, I'm going to turn it over to Brittany.
Brittany Bennix, Town Planner. Still a little bit, 90%. I'm joined today with Stephanie Hager online too, from Bay Area Economics, and she can help answer any questions you may have on BAE's report. So let's see. I'll be doing a very quick overview of the staff report that was submitted for this presentation. It will include a background, analysis, discussion, and then next steps. Starting off with the background, the last time we met was actually January 8th, 2025, at a study session, not June 8th, as it says up there. What we did was we covered what is an Inclusionary Housing Program? What is required by the state to adopt a program? How does the program work with the town's adopted housing element goals? And then we reviewed two reports that were prepared by BAE, including the Inclusionary Housing Feasibility Analysis, looking at whether or not an Inclusionary Program is even feasible in the town, and then looking at the Inclusionary Housing in-Lu Fee Analysis. And that's where we look at different types of fees, how we would apply one versus the other. And then the last thing that I want to mention that we addressed in January was we just received a comment letter from the state's Department of Housing and Community Development outlining additional steps that they wanted to take in our housing element adoption process before they could certify us. So the feedback generally from that meeting was, number one, prioritize certification of the housing element. And then, second, was a preference towards adopting a program for the RM20 and 40 sites. Those are the sites on the Menlo College, Menlo School, and Sacred Heart-zoned areas. There was some concern raised regarding application of the program to the RM10 sites, specifically those on Bay Road, Ringwood, and Ravenswood. Those are the sites that are privately owned, especially as it relates to the application of the state's density bonus program and the potential for interest and town's leadership to potentially reconsider the sites. And then finally, a concern regarding application of a program to single-family home construction. What does that look like? Is it just net new construction, meaning new construction on vacant properties? Is it demolition, new construction? Is it additions? What is the scope of what a fee could apply? So some milestones since January. We received certification of the housing element in May. And then we also completed the 2024 Annual Progress Report, and I included this table in your staff report because it demonstrates that even though we're only two years into the reporting program, so a quarter of the way through, we're actually outpacing some of our areas where we want to see more lower-income units. And that's in large part to the work that the town is doing with the ADU program. So I wanted to highlight that because I know that there's some interest out there. And well, what if we just let the ADU program go and see if that carries us all the way forward? So the problem with that, or the challenge with that, is that the housing element strategies that we propose to the state and were certified with relies on both ADUs and inclusionary that would derive from the PFS-zoned multifamily overlay. Again, PFS zoning, public facilities and schools. That's Menlo School, Menlo College, Sacred Heart. And a big part of that is there's a portion in the housing element that addresses, well, what if the town doesn't meet the RENA numbers? What is the default shortfall program? And the way that we address that in the housing element was to rely on the RM20 sites, RM2040 sites. So HCD, as they mentioned in their certification letter, they're really looking to the town to eventually adopt Program 3.811C, which is a 20% inclusionary program on the school sites. I also included Table B in the staff report because I thought it was helpful for decision-makers to see how the town's strategy relies on ADUs versus multifamily and the overlay. Specifically, these 96 units that you see at the very bottom of the multifamily overlay strategy, that's supposed to all come from the private school sites. So that's 22% of what we're showing here is the RENA requirement plus a buffer. That buffer was mandatory. We had to strategize with kind of a safeguard in per state law. But it shows you what the numbers were and kind of the proportionality of how heavy we were leaning on ADUs versus the school sites. So this brings us to the discussion component tonight, or this afternoon. I've laid out four paths with the city manager that I thought the group here should consider. The first one is considering no ordinance adoption. This would rely entirely on ADUs, but conflicts with the need to pursue Program 3.811C. So this would be in the event that the town didn't comfortable, didn't feel comfortable moving forward immediately with the program and wanted to take more time. I think one of the problems with that is then, depending on how much more time you take, that study gets stale. It's already relying on values from 2023 that I know others are concerned about not being an accurate reflection of current values in real estate in 2025. So the longer we wait to use those studies, the more likely we have to go back and revisit them. With RM20 and 40, the onsite program, this would be my minimum recommendation in terms of what we would move forward with. This addresses the Program 3.811C requirement. And then I think it's also beneficial because it allows the town to move forward with an Inclusionary Housing Program that many haven't seen before in this jurisdiction. And so it gets you familiar with the different types of components, what a deed restriction would look like, how you would compare one market rate unit towards a, to an affordable unit. There is a lot of layers to an affordability program, and this would be kind of an easy way for the town to get introduced to that if they were to delay moving forward in other program areas. So that brings us to the next third category. This is the RM2040 Onsite Program plus RM10. This now brings in those recently rezoned RM10 properties, which would net us about 17 lower-income units. I think the question here is whether or not there's confidence in moving forward with that program on those sites. If there is any concern about the site selection and wanting to revisit that, that's not the subject of our meeting. But we would want to hear some direction that perhaps that should be revisited. And then lastly, we have the Townwide Program, which involves single-family home development, as I previously raised, and the broader category of Inclusionary Housing. As we discussed back in January, might require additional analysis by BAE depending on if we extend it beyond just development on a vacant lot. So next steps moving forward. Or well, the objective tonight is really to get some more initial feedback to help staff in actually drafting the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. That would then, depending on what the feedback is, we might actually have to go back and rework the study with BAE, depending on how quickly each program would move forward. But ultimately, it would need to go to the Planning Commission first for review, and it would go to the City Council for at least two meetings. The, actually, three potentially, with the introduction, the first reading, the second reading. That concludes my presentation. I'm going to go back to the discussion page just to kind of keep us anchored and focused.
Okay, thank you very much, Brittany, City Manager. So I guess we have a very large group here, and I think everyone would like to express their feelings. Maybe I should open it up again to the public if they have any questions on what Brittany has just presented. Questions or comments, please feel free to come now to the podium. Mr. Riddle, thank you.
So I would like to have clarified the fact, or my understanding, that when you have an inclusionary fee, if that fee is paid, that waives the need to have the 20% low-cost housing, but they still get the benefits of a builder's bonus, which allows them to negate everything that was discussed when we were selecting the properties with setbacks and height requirements. They get all of those waived, not all of them, but they get a number of them waived so that they can build anything they want on these properties if they pay a fee. Is that clear? Is that a correct understanding?
I'll turn that question over to our city planner. Do you want to follow up?
Those things can be waived anyway if they provide 20% or more of affordable housing.
That's what I understand. But that was never mentioned during the discussions with the selections of the units, it would be R10s.
I think Jed's question is if somebody pays the in-lu fee as opposed to developing affordable units, do they still get to take advantage of the density bonus benefits?
Town Planner Brittany Bennix, the answer is no, they don't. In order to get the density bonus, you have to provide the actual affordable units. So if a developer came in and wanted to use an in-lu fee option, then they wouldn't be able to, they would not be eligible for the density bonus, the state's density bonus program.
Because even in the presentation of the staff report, it said that's uncertain as to whether or not they could. So is that clear that they would not be able to? I can refer you to the page.
Sure.
I can add a little bit of clarity to this. So I think what might be happening is the conflation of density bonus law with the need to do an Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. The Inclusionary Housing Ordinance helps the city, the town of Atherton, meet its regional housing needs allocation numbers at different affordability rates. So the town has the requirement to show how it's going to comply with the RENA numbers. Individual developers can make a density bonus request if they provide on their project certain kind of affordability. But they're two very different things, so we should not be conflating the two. Payment of an inclusionary in-lu fee or construction of that would be in conjunction with complying with this ordinance. It has nothing to do with a density bonus.
Correct, and that was Mr. Polito's point, that even if the town didn't adopt an Inclusionary Ordinance, a developer could still, on a multifamily site, build affordable units and take advantage of the density bonus.
Exactly.
Chair Lane, I think.
Six of seven in the report talks about developers may pursue concessions and incentives in the state's density bonus program. And there, we talked about the application of an inclusionary fee. Staff recognizes that there are concerns that the application of an inclusionary requirement on RM10 sites may encourage developers to pursue concessions and incentives in the state's density bonus program.
I'm sorry, I didn't get exactly, I'm sorry, I didn't get exactly what page you're referring to because you said six of seven.
Jed, I'll take care of it since you don't have a mic there. He's talking about on page six of seven, the second paragraph?
Six of seven? Do I have a six of seven?
Nine of thirteen.
Sorry, nine of thirteen, sorry.
Okay.
Staff recognizes that there are concerns that the application of an inclusionary requirement on the RM10 sites may encourage developers to pursue concessions and incentives with the state's density bonus program. That is with the application of the inclusionary program. Is what that means.
Okay. Does that clear it up for you?
So are you telling me they'd have to have the 20% and pay it, pay it?
The inclusionary requirement, if the town adopts an Inclusionary Ordinance and applies it to the RM10 site, there would be a requirement to produce affordable housing at whatever percentage the town allocates or pay the in-lu fee. If they develop the affordable housing, they can take advantage of a density bonus. If they pay the in-lu fee, they cannot.
I don't see where it says that here, but that's your understanding.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, but, okay, so they still have a right, though, if they have a, if they have the 20% density to build these properties and get waivers of the town's own ordinance.
In the multifamily zone, if the town does not adopt an Inclusionary Ordinance and a developer still produces affordable housing, yes, they can take advantage of the density bonus.
Okay. I'm going to turn it over to Chair Lane. He has a comment.
Thank you.
Oh, any other members of the public? Okay, closed public comments, sorry.
So I wanted to ask Brittany, on the SB9 inclusion in this strategy, I'm surprised there wasn't anything about that. So, for example, if we incentivize SB9s on two-acre lots or bigger, and then also incentivize that split to have an ADU. So all of a sudden, we're more likely to come up with a different range of housing price and get the ADUs up. And if we did that specifically targeted for certain lots or areas, we wouldn't have to change the zoning. But it's utilizing the leverage SB9 that's already happening, as we've already seen. So for example, if we were to say, you know, this area is a good area for an SB9 incentive. So the homes in this area, we would grant the SB9, and we'd waive the fee or something like that. See, the idea is to take the leverage of SB9 that's already going on and start getting credit for it in this plan. Just.
So the reason I didn't specifically call out SB9 is because the units that the housing element relies on from SB9 as a program, because SB9 is a program in the housing element, are all above moderate units. They're not low-income units. So that's, and right now, in 2024, the APR, we're at 47.9% of our target for above moderate units, and we can't rule that backwards.
So for example, on the properties along El Camino, if they were to be duplexes or split, and then, that would, that would have a higher possibility of being in the mid-level homes. So there are sections of town that if we incentivize those areas, they might result in more mid, even though overall that wouldn't be the case on a one-acre property. Anyway, I just thought highlighting it in the plan would be something we wanted to.
I just want to caution everyone, we are not going to be talking about any locations or addresses or, you know, neighborhoods. This is not what we're doing here. Okay? When we come to that, those neighbors would be notified with ample advice.
Right, absolutely. I just want to make sure that if there was an SB9 strategy here, that as to the numbers, we would think about it.
The way to think about SB9 as contributing to lower-income units is through, is by the yield of ADUs from an SB9 lot split. And you act, and you can't, at this point, we don't have anything that would force anybody into a certain income level or household for an ADU. Everything that we're representing in our annual progress report is self-reported. When you do an SB9 lot split, the lots are allowed, you're allowed two units per lot. And if you choose to do a single family, like a more traditional single-family home development, and that second unit is an ADU, you're actually, I guess, the original property would be allowed to have a single-family home and three ADUs, two ADUs, and a J-ADU. You're kind of netting the same with the SB9 lot split. You're still, you actually get less, fewer ADUs out of an SB9 lot split than you would just traditional new construction development.
Okay, all right, I understand.
All right, so I think I've closed public comments, seeing no other public comments. We're going to take it back to our joint committee and council meeting. How would you like to proceed, Chair Lane? Shall we just go around the table? Or guys, if you want to jump in, make a statement? We could do that. How would you like?
I think we can go around the table, but maybe we go with the council first, and then the Planning Commission.
Can you do questions, Elizabeth? Can we do questions first before statements?
Well, I think that's, yeah, we were going to go around to get questions.
Okay.
Should we go through the, there's like the four items, do one at a time?
Yeah. Okay. Do you want to start?
Okay, well, we're just talking about number one, no ordinance adoption.
Okay.
I am with staff on not doing nothing. How's that? Pretty concise.
I didn't.
So if we're just talking.
Don't think we want, we need an ordinance?
I'm not supportive of doing nothing.
The one, the one, the number one, the no ordinance.
I said it too complicated, too many double negatives. So I am supportive of what staff says. So I don't, I don't know, maybe we just skip number one.
Staff strongly recommends against a course of, quote-unquote, "no action."
Yeah.
I agree.
Anyone want to comment on that? Or do you agree pretty much? See some nodding heads? I agree also.
That'd be a 25% reduction in conversation.
Yeah, okay, we're moving right along. Okay. Next council person, Diana, would you like to take on number two?
I'm in favor of the 2040. But I do have a question, which is when we were talking about the amounts of the in-lu fee, that does matter when we get farther down. Because when we were looking at the ones for individual houses, and I looked at the numbers, and they were reported as, you know, this much per square footage. And I kind of, it kind of went past me with my math skills until I actually did the math on it and saw what the number would be for a fee for an individual house. And I thought that was crazy. So the amounts that we talk about, I think, are big. And I don't know what we're, so I want to make sure we answered questions about that.
Right.
But as far as asking just about this one, I am in favor of doing it on the 2040.
Okay, any discussion on that, any comments? Go ahead, Bob.
I don't see why we would limit it to 20% on the school. I think it should be a much higher number, particularly if we're going to, if we're going to be finding ways to fund it. Why would there be any above-market or at-market units that we would pay for on the school site?
And we decide the amount, or is that put by the state? Because the 20% was coming, can we decide? Can we say it has to be 100% low-income?
The 20% is what we put in our housing element to address the shortfall component. So at a minimum, we need to stick with 20%.
Could we up it by vote here?
We could.
But that increases our, that increases our target, right? If we up it, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right now, the target of 96 units assumes that whatever comes in on the school sites is going to be some type of affordability. The 20% is the baseline bare minimum that we would have to pursue. So we could, in theory, if we move forward with this program, with the Planning Commission, we can bring forth other options.
But you also want to think about balance a little bit, too, for the college. I mean, one of their concerns when they were looking at this project was they didn't want to give up control of the property. They wanted to maintain control of whatever development was on their site. So if they've developed a way to market-rate some of those units in order to pay for the project and still meet our requirement for percentage set aside, hey, that's great, they're kind of self-funding it. If we remove that flexibility from them by setting the percentage too high, it may limit their options.
However, can I make? It just seems to me that the purpose of doing on-campus housing is to provide affordable housing for their faculty, their students, and staff, and workers, and people like that. And it's exclusionary because it's really going to be kind of their community. And they're not going to want to, or I always thought that they would not be doing a lot of high-market rent units there. I could be wrong.
Well, were they only thinking in terms of having just employees there? Or were they looking at market people coming in or living there too? They weren't, they were looking at it being internal to their.
Maybe not just employees, it could be students also.
Students, staff, and faculty.
Stacy Weissmeyer.
I just was wondering if you've heard from Menlo College and if they've had any kind of recent thought on what they're up to in terms of market rate, not, or any of it.
The last I heard, they still have the need, but the issue is still funding.
Okay.
Rick, and then Mr. Widmer.
If we were to have a program or through some other mechanism, provide funding to the college or any of the other RM2040 sites, couldn't we condition that funding on anything we want to condition it on? So I don't think that we need to assert in an inclusionary program a higher percentage to 2040 than we would do to RM10 because we're not necessarily giving money to the schools. And if we were to give money to the schools, I think we could condition that grant of money on anything we want. It's a contractual arrangement. And I agree with what was said. We want to see affordable housing at the schools. I mean, frankly, we don't, I'm not interested in any apartment buildings being in Atherton unless they're affordable. unless they're affordable. The only reason that we're supporting them is because we have more than two thousand employees in the schools and X thousand employees within the town who can't live here. So to have affordable housing be available is in our interest as well as their interests. Um, but I don't think we need to put, put that into an inclusionary program because we think we're going to get the money. Because right now we're not in the, we, we don't have a program to give them money. And if we do, we should condition it on what we think is appropriate.
Mr. Widmer?
Yeah. Thank you. I thought that when we, uh, were putting together the table and looking at what we were doing, uh, I recall that George had a letter from each, the president of both, um, locations and they gave an estimate of what they thought the numbers would be. Obviously that's not, um, contractual and it depends on who's applying, when and if that ever gets built. My concern is, is that the dorm is a big number. The number over at Menlo College is a smaller number. Um, and so that's, that's like seventy-five, that's seventy-five.
Units.
Yeah. People being housed and, and there's nothing going on about that. So, um, to get back to where we are with this, I am against number one. I'm against number four. I think two and three are up for further discussion. But, you know, my concern is, is that we, we need to get the schools to at least put together some rudimentary plans of how they would do it and what they would do so that when we get audited in a year or so, um, we can say that it's moving forward. And right now it's not. And, and I think that's a big concern. And so then we'll be going back through, if we're not there, we'll be going back through what we went through just a year ago of identifying other areas that this time are going to have to be graded RM twenty, not RM ten.
Diana?
I have a question. Going back to the conversation we were just having about, um, whether or not we should lower the number of, or raise the number, sorry, of, of low-income houses as part of this deal and you saying that we, we could do that on our side when we fund it. When there was this whole feasibility study done, was that feasible, that said that the RM twenty and forty were, they were feasible, financially feasible, was that based on the twenty percent inclusionary number? And do we have an idea, could we even up that number or would it not no longer be financially feasible? Getting back to what George was saying is that it's got to make sense. So maybe that doesn't make sense with a number other than the twenty percent or a higher number.
Stephanie, is that something that you could address?
Yeah. Hi, everybody. Stephanie Hager, BAE Urban Economics. So we did our study based on the twenty percent that was in the housing element program. It did show that, that type, that that zoning district could support, um, an inclusionary housing requirement of the twenty percent with maybe a little bit of room for feasibility to up it if you wanted to, you know, play with that number a little bit. We haven't done any analysis to figure out whether or not that is still the case if we were to say, update everything based on, um, the most current values in the market, um, which, you know, as, as Brittany mentioned, some of this is based on data from a year or two ago. So it's possible that, that the findings will change if we were to redo that now.
Thank you. I'd like to open it up for the, um, planning commissioners to make comments on this item. Bob, do you want to start? Kind of moving around there.
I think, a, as was stated earlier, number one, I agree with staff. That would, that would put us on bad footing with, with the state and at some point we might need to be on, stay on good footing with the state. Rick's point is very valid, so we can tie it. If in fact, we find a way to funnel money to get housing built at the schools, we can, we, we can deal with the, whether it's twenty percent or ninety percent affordable, we can deal with it, with strings on the money. So I, I, that's not an issue to me. We definitely should move forward, I believe, with, with something on the RM twenty and forty sites. As you know, I'm definitely against doing anything on the RM ten sites because I think there's all kinds of unintended consequences that we still may face anyway, but, uh, I'm not happy with the sites. And so I think other people aren't happy with the sites. And so to move forward with anything there, I think would be wrong. And finally, I have no idea why Bill's against the townwide program because without some program, we're not going to generate any money. And, and the Atherton Coalition and all the other, uh, rich folks in town apparently haven't given the schools any money to even start design work, let alone anything else. It's going to have to come from, from fees. And the fees don't have to be onerous that you seem, knowing you, you may have made a, had a decimal point in the wrong place or something.
I'm sure I did.
But.
That was a question.
But, but the fees do not have to be that onerous because the amount of construction in this town is unbelievable. There are some other issues that the consultants are going to have to deal with. Apparently they tried to do this before across all construction and had some legal problems. So we got to figure out if we can do it, but a modest fee on all new construction in town and maybe even on remodeling could generate a lot of money. And then we can either feed it to the schools with the strings that Rick has mentioned or we can do our own thing. We can find a property somewhere that get minimal people showing up with T-shirts and build our own hundred percent affordable unit that we control and own. Because even with a modest fee, we can generate millions a year, um, from all this construction.
Jerome, would you like to weigh in on this?
Wait, can I ask a question?
Oh, sure.
I have a question for Bob. I don't understand what the problem is for you of applying an inclusionary ordinance to RM ten. What is your concern?
Well, part of the concern is I don't like the RM, all the RM ten sites. Maybe I don't like any of them. But the other part of the concern is all the unintended consequences that come about by demanding that they put twenty percent affordability in there, which immediately gets them to start looking, well, maybe if I go thirty-five percent, I get two or three more things waived. And first thing you know, we have ten-foot setbacks and fifty-foot heights. I don't know what could happen.
But, but they can do all of that without the inclusionary.
They can do some of it, but why do we want, why do we want to dangle a carrot to get the horse going that direction? I don't think we do. I think the lower, the, the lower key these RM ten sites are until we've decided whether we're going to revisit that or not, the better.
Right. Jerome?
I, I, I favor the RM twenty, forty. I think it's premature to look at the, uh, RM twenty, forty plus ten. I think we can revisit that in the future.
All right. Thank you. Andy?
So I look at you, Brittany, when I say this, but I, it's sort of addressing, can Menlo and Menlo College? I don't know what number we're looking at coming from schools. I mean, has, have these all, have the, all these schools said that they in fact want to have this housing, whether they can afford it or not?
Yes. There is a need, but there is also a need for the financing.
Right. So, so we're saying that we'd like to have them there, but we have no money at this point. And, and obviously the schools have no money to build this at this point.
Well, Menlo College, there's no money. It's questionable about.
Menlo School may, but, yeah. But let me just kind of answer, uh, I think as the other counselors have alluded to that we've got to start doing something and maybe form a fundraising committee for a, to, to fund the architect, to create a design for the Menlo College site, you know? And then go out with that to try to get more funding and as that ball gets rolling, you know, get interested in, that would be the private financing method. And lots of schools and hospitals are built that way, you know, mega donors, you know, with their name on their, on the building. But for us to sit here and not do anything, I'm, I just have to say, I was at a gathering the other night over the weekend and, um, you know, people were, well, what's going on with this? What's going, and of course I live right down the corner, the street from Menlo College. You know, how are you going to answer that? And so talking about, I said, but you know, what we have to do is what I just said we have to do. And they go, oh yeah, you know, you're right. You know, we, we should put something together, you know? And everybody felt that that would be doable. Have to kind of talk to an architect to get, you know, a price tag, a general price tag. Is it a hundred thousand dollars or a million or ten million, you know, for the plan? Probably. Anyway.
Sandy, do you have anything else?
Just for the plan.
No.
Can I, can I say something? Response to what Sandy asked?
Yeah.
So there's a difference between Menlo College and Menlo School. That's quite a significant difference. Both did send us a letter exactly as Bill described. Menlo School has been clear and we know Menlo School and Sacred Heart are able to raise money whenever they have a really focused, uh, need. Because they have deep pockets within their, their student body families. But Menlo School has been quite clear that they really don't want to manage the kids living in an apartment unit and kids, I mean, twenty, thirty-year-old kids that are teaching there. That's an issue for them. They're not opposed to it, but they're not excited about it. So they're not focused on it in order to raise the money and make it happen. Menlo College is pretty different. Menlo College has been quite explicit that they have a real need. They've polled their staff. They have a general idea of how many units they need. And we've worked with them on that and identified locations at the school where they could build a four-story and two-story building, um, but they need the money to do that, which they don't have. And they don't have the same opportunity that Menlo School has or that Sacred Heart has. So there's a difference there.
They have the desire to do it.
Yeah, there's a desire.
Yeah.
I think Sacred Heart right now is focused on that.
And a need, desire and a need.
They have a new master's program.
They have a new need. But, uh, so would, would their numbers satisfy what we're looking for or would satisfy the state?
Fifty-five.
Okay.
And we did look at how much money it would cost and it was in the tens of millions of dollars.
Right.
For the whole project?
For the whole project.
But yeah.
Thirty-five million.
I, I want to start small with an architect.
Yeah, that's in the thousands.
That's what we did with the town center.
Really.
Right? And then with that little, that I just brought back, that image, took that around, you know, houses and said, look what we can build here.
Right, because you, you move it from a theory to a like, hey, we can really do this. Oh, that looks good, let's do it.
Yeah. And that, one more and then we're going to.
Just one question.
Yeah.
What, do they qualify? There's a lot of grants for, uh, school housing, but it's a private college. Do they qualify for some of the grants that are available? Do you know?
Uh, it really depends on the grant.
Okay.
So I, I, I just want to clarify before I make my comment. We didn't specifically talk about all the elements of the townwide bullet. Is there anything there that I, that more than just fees and things like that? Like, what are you, what are you talking about on the townwide bullet?
Well, I, I think how the mayor was hoping this conversation would go is we'd go with number one. And it seemed like there was general consensus that everyone agreed no ordinance wasn't an option. And so, um, the mayor was trying to have us focus on number two, but some people have given their thoughts in three and four.
That's why.
Some people was only of address two.
So that's why I wanted to know four.
Widmer always likes to jump to the end.
All right, so, so I can play that. Well, I was going to give it, going to go down the four of the, the way I understood it, but now I'm not sure what twenty, but what townwide means.
Let's stick with number two right now.
All right, well.
Just the RM twenty and forty and then we can go back to three.
Well, then let's go this way. I can, I can tell you what I think on the first three and then I'll, you got to tell me what townwide means. I, I agree, no ordinance adoption is just not a, not as a no-op. Twenty forty is my preferred approach and that combined with whatever we do on SB nines to num, the number, I believe that the ADU strategy is going to give us the number. And because they, they count up, I mean, if you, if you had four hundred ADUs, you would cover your middle and the moderate number because they count up. They don't count down. So if you have more, uh, above moderate, doesn't, doesn't count below it, but as I understand it, ADUs could cover the whole thing if we did all ADUs. Is that correct?
We would be relying on individuals to self-report that they're.
Yes, right.
But it could, in theory, yes.
Right. So I, I'm fine, I'm fine with the twenty forty approach with incentives for, for the school sites because I believe that that'll give us the number we want. It'll also provide an incentive for people to donate because if they have a choice between going with higher density out in our neighborhoods or going density in those locations, they're going to go choose, they're going to choose that and support that. The other thing I might think about in terms of the incentives that maybe police, school teachers from the surrounding schools and fire and ambulance protection might be included in those numbers of people that would be looking at, I don't know if it's possible or not, but.
Look at what they're paying.
The teachers and the public schools, they're making over a hundred thousand dollars.
I'm not talking about public schools. I'm talking about.
He's talking about, but, but for the, uh, Menlo College site.
Yeah.
See, they, again, you have to kind of get it in around your head that they want their community.
Okay, got it.
So if it was their security guard or their, you know, around, uh, of campus.
Yeah.
Those workers, that's who they want to, especially students. And their students aren't, you know, wealthy students.
When we, when Rick and I met with the president, he, he was very clear. He was not going to have people from outside the community, the, the school community stay there. Nobody from the other schools, nobody that's, you know, just a resident that needs a place.
Okay.
Only students, faculty and staff that are associated with Menlo College, period, the end.
I would, I would think police would be an exception that they might go to consider. Okay. The, uh, the RM twenty onsite program, RM ten, I think that goes down the path that Bob talked about, which is, is the, the number could, you know, it looks like it's going to be fifteen, but actually ends up being eighteen and it's in bad locations, uh, particularly on the corner lot. There were some specific lots we had concerns with. So my, of the first three that I understand, the only one that I could think we need to look at is the twenty forty plus incentive to get going.
Okay, that's, that's the one that we've been focused on is the selection number two. So given everyone's, uh, conversation and questions and comments, it seems to me, did you get a chance to talk on the forty, item number two? Can't remember.
It's a, it's a no-brainer to me, number two.
Okay, good. All right. I thought, I thought you had.
Well, what is the townwide, what does it refer to?
Well, we're not doing that yet.
Okay, okay.
We're not doing that yet.
It's not our subject.
We're only doing on number two. So.
Oh, it is. She's saying number four.
Oh, four. Okay, got it.
I'm doing number two right now. Shrug me off. Come on.
I think it's a silly way to break it down. I mean.
Well.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I think Brittany needs, you know, clear direction on each item. So the number two, I think we're all in agreement.
It does help to focus. I think, um, what I'm, what I'm hearing from just focusing on the RM twenty, forty, discussed whether or not it makes sense to go beyond the twenty percent, but it seems like there's general consensus that flexibility is okay right now. It sounds like there's potential for a fundraising committee too. Um, and there's focus on Menlo College. So I think that that is really helpful for me as staff to kind of understand at a baseline what the town wants to move forward with, um, that's relatively.
Great. Thank you. Okay. So let's move on to number three. Number three is adding to the twenty forty RM sites, uh, RM ten. I've heard a number of, uh, planning commissioners and council members, uh, opposing that, uh, concept. Not you, but I said some of them, not, we're not unanimous, so we should have a little discussion about why, uh, some of us do not want the RM ten tacked on to the RM.
What Bob said.
Yeah. What Bob said.
I'll say something.
You can go pro.
So I understand the argument that you don't want to dangle a carrot in front of developers and encourage them to think about the density bonus and because that gives them the ability because that gives them the ability to ignore or exempt themselves from certain requirements that we have. But the reality is, these are not stupid people. They know what's going on. They know about the density bonus. I, I don't think this is an issue of dangling a carrot or hiding it under the rug. I, I think that they're going to figure out what they want to do. And I don't think we want apartment buildings being built that don't have affordable housing in them. I mean, that's the purpose of this. That's A, the goal of the state and which isn't what's primary to me. But we have a need within our community for affordable housing. If we're going to authorize apartment buildings, I'm going to say they damn well ought to have affordable units in them, or I don't want them. So I think we should include the RM10. I don't see any reason not to. I, I understand that somebody could say, well, that's dangling a carrot to encourage them to think about affordable housing. But the reality is, I want them to include affordable housing. That's why we're authorizing it. So I'm in support of including RM10.
Councilmember Whitmer.
Well, I mentioned that before. I think that it's something that we need to, we need to have. Doesn't mean that they're going to always build something. And if they give us the extra money and they decide to pay it off, then that goes towards our fund to whichever we want to go do. I don't think that all of the, all the locations, people are coming in here saying, you know, licking their chops, saying, hey, you know, I can get the density bonus here, and I can do this, and I can do that, and I can turn a 10-unit site to a 50-unit site. I don't think that's the case. I understand Mr. Riddle's concern. I do. You know, and, and, and other people who, who back up to, to the different RM10 sites were, are concerned about what the setback requirements are and things like that. I understand that, okay? But I don't think that we should just outlaw it. I, I really feel that we need to have that option to raise the funds. I'm concerned about raising the funds. I've said this all along. I'm concerned about helping Menlo College get started because it's 50-some-odd units. It's a big chunk, and I don't think, you know, I think there's been a big push on ADUs. Everybody's doing ADUs right now, but that's going to slow down. The people who are going to do them have started it or they're concerned, you know, are going to start it and get going on it, okay? Or they've got plans to go do it. But over time, that's going to have diminishing returns, and I think we're going to be stuck. And I don't want to see us having to go back through all the stuff that we had to go through with the people with the T-shirts and everything else, you know, to, to rezone, you know, other locations that have been mentioned here and there. I just, I'd like to be able to feel like we're on pretty good straight, you know, a straight and narrow path here. And I think one of the straight and narrow paths is Menlo College. I've, I've got other concerns about Menlo School because I, I've heard that perhaps they're really not that interested, you know, they kind of just were trying to help us out, blah, 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 whatever it is. Menlo College has got the real need. They were, they were very, very clear with us what they need. They were very, very clear with us in doing an analysis of how many would be low income, and it's more than just a 20%. And we need that. And I think that until we decide that we're going to do what we can do to help them, because it's not just going to happen by accident.
All right, but.
I thought we moved on from number two, and we're on number three.
Yeah, that's what I was mentioning about number three.
But he's saying he likes number three because it, it gives the in-lu opportunity for developers not to do the affordable, and that would generate money into the fund.
That's, I think that's.
The fees generated from, from eight ARM10 properties compared to the fees from.
Okay, I don't vote for it.
Yeah.
Well, I want you to recognize that.
I'm here what you're saying.
All right, thank you.
Let's, let's stay civil here. Stacy, Vice Mayor.
I have a question because I think what Bob said is fair of, it's not that many lots, RM10. Do we have a ballpark of what we could raise from an RM10 fee? If all of them developed and none of them did it for what we got, all the fees, what's the, what's the ceiling? That's, I'm just.
Yeah, ballpark.
Well, so the, the fee would be applied by square footage.
Right.
And the fees right now for RM10 that we have, we put before you in January range from $26 per square foot to 212.
Okay, so.
And then you have to consider the fact that the way you set the fee might encourage one to pay the fee versus build the unit. And that's one of the questions we had relative to, so what would the preference be in each scenario?
Okay.
But we don't have, I mean, we don't have a ballpark number because.
It's a big range, 26 to 250 per square foot.
And how many square feet? I mean, it depends upon what the development is.
Okay. So maybe, what I'm hearing is maybe the fee could offset.
So 200 a square foot, and each lot is 10,000 square feet or more?
This is a lot of fast math, guys.
That was a fee. Well, the fee ranges.
I don't remember that.
Yeah, do the highest and lowest. Someone do the math for us. Because this is exactly my question before. It's hard to.
1800 squared, something, times 10, it's like.
That's 180,000.
Yeah, or to 200, yeah.
There's no way the fee can be $200 a foot.
That's like a 25% of the development cost.
For a for-sale prototype under the 10 willing units per acre scenario on a one-acre lot.
I'd have to go back and look at, I've got it here, but. There, there's, there's two things going on here, well, three things really.
Well, there's a lot going on.
Yeah, well, I mean, three things. First of all, that's assuming that the underlying thing that I have about the whole thing is that we're being asked, all cities are being asked to do the wrong type of plan. So we're being told to do stupid planning. To the degree that we buy into that concept, then we say, okay, so what is the statement that we want to make to developers? And what is the statement we want to make to, to residents? So to me, the statement I want to make to residents is I'm not in favor of higher density on RM10s. All right, that's the statement I want to make to the citizens. Now, to the developer, they've got to come in, they're going to say, hey, we can do this. We'll squeeze this in, we'll do that. And that's always going to go on with developers. I, I, we are totally capable of raising the funds we need to bootstrapped something in this community. There's no doubt about it.
That's what I think.
And so the reason that I don't want to put RM10 out there is for, for, for two major reasons. First of all, the overall state directive is wrong. It's just totally wrong. Cities are being told to do stupid things in a stupid way.
I agree.
Second of all, I don't want to state, make a statement to the citizens of the community that the RM10 is something we want to be more dense. I want to solve it a different way. I want to solve it on the school properties and also with ADUs and also with SB9 splits. So if, if I make that statement to the community, I can stand by that saying, by the bottom line, I'm doing things that are, I'm told to be something stupid. I'm going to do it the smartest way I can. So that's why, that's why I'm, I don't think the RM10 is the way to go.
I agree. Yes, Diana.
I agree with what you're saying. Everything you just said, I 100% agree. But where I fall apart and where maybe someone can explain to me is that if that's our view that we don't want to support density, wouldn't we want to make it? Wouldn't we want to have it so that, all right, how do I say this? I, I would not want our residents to have us put this out. We've already done it. It's already out there. So we've already put the RM10 on the table. And I think we should make it clear that the only reason we wanted RM10 for the people that got, who's living near there is because we needed to do it. And so we should require there to be low income and not just leave it so that someone could come in and develop with, you know, full income.
We'll get low incomes. It's a matter of how much extra low income we get, right?
Yeah, I want to be clear about the purpose of the RM10 program. It's not to provide low-income units. It's to provide a diversity of housing stock. And that's inherently how it meets the affirmatively furthering fair housing requirement, the AFFH requirement of the housing element for this cycle. It's not to develop specifically income, units at specific income levels.
I understand that, but he was saying what we're saying to our residents. We had to say to our residents, we're going into your neighborhood and we're going to allow apartments. And I think that the only reason we did that is because we were required by the state to have low-income housing. And I know that category fits that other, the, the diversity of housing stock. But I still think that we should attach as many liens to that as we can. So you have to, if you're going to build here, I want you to build at low income, period. And if there's a way we could do that, that's what I would do because I think it's a big sacrifice that we had to do it in the first place. And I don't want to give a free license to developers to just say, oh, what a great opportunity. I can make, you know, five market-rate things, you know? That's not what the intention was here. So whatever we can do policy-wise to make sure it ends up being low income is what I'd be in favor of.
Stacy, do you have a comment on that?
Yeah, I think our, our RM10 was to fulfill our AFFH requirements. But I'm wondering if it, like, all, if we don't have an, an ordinance tied to it, I doubt any affordable housings would, would result from that development, which means that 10 above moderate apartments would get built in a lot, which is almost more offensive to me that there's no, no affordable units there. I think also, we're here saying we're not 100% sure that Menlo School or Sacred Heart will develop. And so if we have the RM10s covering a sliver of that, that gives us more cushion if Sacred Heart doesn't develop, if Menlo School doesn't develop. So I think having the RM10 included gives us more flexibility to achieve our goals without having to expand the stock that we have right now. That's how I'm feeling it.
Yes.
So I understand that RM10 is categorized to enable greater diversity and that it doesn't satisfy the RENA numbers for affordable housing. I think the reality is, the only way we get a diverse community of people into Atherton is to have lower-cost housing. If you build three and a half to four million dollar, 2,000 square foot apartments, you're not going to get a diverse group of people buying those. And I understand the categorization for them, but the reality, but that categorization, as Eric has articulated, is designed off of a stupid plan that the state legislature is forcing down our throats. And that plan is based on one solution fits all for a whole series of diverse communities. And we know it doesn't work for us, but we have to deal with it because it's the state mandate. So the answer, I think, is for us to be as intelligent as we can about what it is that's going to happen. And I don't, I mean, my judgment is you put in three and a half to four million dollar apartments, and you're not going to get a diverse population buying those apartments. But if you put in affordable housing based on the criteria that we have in front of us, you're going to have a much greater opportunity to get a more diverse group of people buying that property. So that's why I support including this.
Okay. Stacy.
I have a question. So I'm sure you'll, this will be included when this comes back in front of us. But if someone, these are overlays. They're not rezoning. So if someone built a single-family home, I would assume they would get a much higher penalty fee, in-lu fee versus if someone built RM5 or, you know, less density than RM10. Like, is there a way to have a sliding scale? Because if someone builds a single-family home, that's neither helping our AFFH requirements nor our RENA. So that seems like a problem.
I could help with the ADUs and RENA. They can do three ADU. There is no penalty towards the RM10 properties for only developing a single-family homes with ADUs.
Okay.
It's either or.
More if they do less density, so if they do a fourplex instead of the 10.
In order to use the RM10 program, we set it so you have to have at least five units.
Okay.
And it is, it is an overlay, right? So it doesn't have to be built.
Not a mandate.
And let's face it, it's been out there in the public for a year, and we haven't gotten one plan yet.
Right.
I guess that's my follow-up question of if we have no building on RM10 overlay on the, I, I know they're tracking our RENA, but these were not put in for our RENA. So if we're not checking the box of the AFFH, are they going to? Is there going to be consequences? Not yet?
There, there was a mid-cycle check-in requirement for the RM10 program. And then that expands to, I haven't really raised the Holbrook Palmer Park site, the Bear Gulch site, and the Circus Club were all also included in RM10. So we would, we would add those into the consideration when we look at our mid-cycle check-in.
Okay.
All these here or around here are intended to, right?
No.
No.
All right, what is?
These are zone R1B.
R1B, right.
So I want to make an observation that the room is pretty much 50-50 split on this issue. And I'm curious if, if timeliness changes anybody's thoughts or opinions. Like, if we were to move forward with the RM20 and 40 program more rapidly, or if there's additional questions that should be considered prior to any consideration of an RM10 or if we should bring forward the entire package if it looked like this all at once and then see how things go.
What percentage of the overall plan time are we? Are we at 30% or?
We're about 25, well, we just reported on 2024, which marks two years into an eight-year program.
Okay.
But we're nearly halfway through 2025.
Okay, got it. I just want to make sure, that's the numbers I had in my head. I just wanted.
20, 22.0.
I thought that there were three council numbers.
Okay.
Well, I think we're talking about the entire room. But if, if, if the council wants to give direction to the planning commission that we would like to see a program that includes this, then it's four to one.
Yeah.
You're, you didn't support RM10 as far as I notes are.
She didn't speak to it.
I, I really didn't.
Okay.
No.
So I should speak to it. I think that we, we struggled with overlaying the homes in the RM10. Had this discussion over and over and over. And I kind of agree with staff that there are concerns that we all have expressed and that we should probably revisit, extend sites. 10. I think if we do the RM2040 with the RM10, they should include affordable units as well. But whether or not, we've already done it. And I think, I feel like we need to move on with, just keep it in. I agree with it. I know I said conflicting things. But that's kind of how I am today.
What she said, right.
Yeah, those are my notes, so.
Just let me add to what you said, that we're not discussing the sites.
No.
But I don't have a problem with the comments that Bob and Eric had said about the sites. I think there's problems with the sites.
Yes.
And at some point, we need to discuss the sites.
Yes.
I do think that it's quite meaningful that we haven't gotten any development plan.
Right.
Well.
Then just to clarify though, that this is council direction to the planning commission in an ordinance should include RM20 and 40 and RM10.
Yes.
At this point, anyway, and then we can go on to the townwide.
Yes. Is that okay?
As opposed to delaying the RM10 portion because we want to revisit possibly.
Yes.
The sites.
Yes.
Correct.
That's what I, I'm.
But that's not the direction.
That what you've been trying to say?
Those are two separate things, aren't they?
No, I, I want to, I want to nix, but, but delaying it would make, would, would suffice.
I have a comment.
Can do that. Okay.
Who's with you?
Let's, yes, Stacy.
I think to rephrase how I'm feeling, I'm supportive of the RM10s being included regardless of the sites. So I think it makes sense for us to move forward. So I think it makes sense for us to move forward.
Me too.
Of the ordinance for RM10s, whether, whatever those locations are, I'm going to support it, is how I feel. How about that?
If they change at some point in the future, that's.
Right.
Different conversation.
Yes.
Right.
Okay. Moving on to item number four, townwide. So we're going to explain to Chair Lane what the townwide means.
Thank you.
Okay. I think if you kind of think of it as all-encompassing, townwide, the 2,600 parcels or whatever that we're going to talk about.
2,600.
Is that what?
Go ahead.
That it takes a, you know, a big swath of single-family development. And, and then as, you know, you can do your ADUs, you can do your development, and, you know, it provides most flexibility. It's just what the staff says. So I support that. I think we need an additional analysis.
So what are we analyzing on that?
Yeah.
Single-family residence.
More about what townwide.
Yeah, let me, let me also give my explanation. The reason we titled this townwide is because it involves single-family home development, which is typically what we see throughout the rest of the town. So we're now including all types of development, really. Where we left off in January was the BAE analysis looks at a vacant lot being developed with a single-family home and gave us a set of fees relative to what could be applied there, as well as a feasibility analysis if a fee could be supported. Where we may have an area that we want the to go back and revisit is, do we want to apply a fee to a project that's a demolition on an existing single-family home and new construction? And then that kind of gets into, well, are we demolishing a 1950s ranch home and replacing it with a 2025 dwelling mansion? Or is it something that was built in 2013 versus 2025? And then how is that nexus different and how would that inform the fee? And so if that's the way that the town wanted to go, BAE would know, would need to go back and do additional analysis. Even then, there's another question of whether or not we would want to pursue additions.
And so my question, so would there be an in lieu fee for these developers, for these single-family homes to pay the town for not doing any kind of ADUs or any other kind of additional units on their house?
So it would be, it would be a fee that would apply to the new development, and then they would have an alternative to do an ADU instead. So the, it's a little different here where the construction is the option and the fee is the principal choice.
Yeah, I didn't get it.
The fee would be the first choice.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? So I thought when I was reading this that it would be a fee, if I go into and I build a new house and I don't build an ADU, I have to pay fee. If I build an ADU but I don't deed-restrict it, I don't want a deed-restricted, I pay an additional fee for not assuming to be deed-restricted. But I just heard you say that it's a general fee for any demolition. So did I misunderstand where we're going with this intention?
I think the demolition threw you off.
Yeah.
Because you, you kind of got it.
Is it those two items I just said? Are there two separate fees? There's a no ADU fee and then a no?
There's no distinction right now.
There's what?
There's no distinction right now, right? The, the fee analysis that BAE provided is a vacant lot that develops new construction.
It's a vacant lot or demolition.
So then the next consideration is if, if we wanted to apply a fee to a project that's a demolition new construction or even a project that's just adding a certain square footage, BAE would have to go back and do additional analysis to give us what that fee might look like.
It seems like that would generate in lieu fees.
That, because of the town's proportion of single-family home construction, yes. There would be a tremendous, there's, there's a potential source of revenue here for funding affordable housing.
But balance that out with virtually every new home in town is building.
Building an ADU.
They get free FAR.
So there's no way, I mean, that's critical. So there's no way we can charge a fee that gets us where we're trying to go, that they can't waive by building an ADU that's really just a way to get extra square footage?
That would be a tax.
No, but I thought that ADU had to be deed-restricted.
Depends on how we set up the inclusionary ordinance, right?
Wait, I, I thought the, I thought the staff proposal was if there's new development on a vacant lot, not on a teardown, but on a vacant lot, then somebody pays a fee unless they build an ADU with a low-income deed restriction.
That is correct.
So it's just the deed restriction part, not the?
Building an ADU doesn't avoid it, but building an ADU and including a deed restriction would avoid it.
I do, I, I want to put a caveat on that. HCD has says that we cannot compel an ADU to be deed-restricted, but we can apply it for a bonus ADU or some other type of accessory unit. So just, it, it's a little bit different.
Say that again, we can't apply.
Cannot. And HCD has come out and said that we cannot compel ADUs to be deed-restricted. In Atherton, the ADU ordinance allows for your state ministerially-approved ADU, but it also allows a bonus ADU. The bonus ADU is not regulated by state law because state law doesn't say that you have to allow two ADUs to be built, right? So we have bigger setback requirements, we allow greater square footage. So on something like that, we can require deed restrictions.
Bonus ADU is only available under what we passed on.
Correct, exactly, that's correct.
Mona, are you saying, though, that we cannot require a deed restriction on the 800-square-foot or less ADU, but we can require a deed restriction on an ADU greater than 800 square feet because that's town-regulated?
That's the bonus.
So.
Square footage bonus.
Yeah, that's right.
On, on a potentially second, on a bonus ADU, we can't.
We can't even do it on our own, it's got to be a second ADU on the site that we.
That's correct, exactly.
So this is where the, so this section is where the SB9 strategy comes into play. So if, for example, I don't know how many vacant lots there are in town, let's say 30, 20. If we were to incentivize SB9 splits on all those properties and, and, and with the split, somehow suggest or require an ADU, all of a sudden our numbers go, where there's two levels that we have to hit. One, we have to hit our number, that takes the heat off. And secondly, we have to provide a different housing mix than we have right now. The SB9 strategy would, would be a sort of a bigger version of what our ADU strategy was originally. My, my whole thing on this is hit the number with the best strategy that fits our community. Single-family homes with ADUs on the larger lot is our best strategy for the type of community we have. All right? So hit that, go for what the type of community we want, not people's storage units that all the other communities are going for. I mean, 800-square-foot little things that call, you know, that's not, that's not going to happen here. So anyway, so that's.
I was here.
I would, can you apply more on what you mean? Because SB9 already applies to the whole town, so do the ADUs.
Yes, but it's not.
When you're saying a strategy, like, it already.
Yes, but it's not incentivized right now. Whereas ADUs, we made a big deal about them and we've talked about them. But there's, there's a lot of properties that could be split and nobody would even feel like it's not even, that it's a, that's, that's anything small. There are all kinds of properties that, that we could be looking at that say, we're, let's, let's come up with a strategy for our two acres.
There's complications with the SB9, there's restrictions. I mean, you, you lot split and you develop both parcels, you have to live there.
But this really isn't on the agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, correct. SB9 is not on the agenda, we're not talking about SB9.
Well, I'm, I'm talking about strategies to get the number.
The inclusionary fee, we're talking about the inclusionary fee and shall it apply to all, all single-family homes that are being built? Or should it be applied to single-family homes that are demolished and then a new one built or what?
I think the proposal doesn't involve single-family homes that are demolished. I think that the, based on what Mona just said, it sounds like this proposal will only be applying to single-family homes that are built on vacant lots of two acres or more. Because you don't get a bonus ADU unless you've got two acres.
That's correct.
That's deed restriction. That's not, I mean.
That's what the study was, that's.
Yes, we're looking, yes, what is in the analysis and we can move forward with more quickly is development on a vacant lot. Check. Yes, Mona is saying that the only way we can deed-restrict a unit is if it's a bonus unit. That doesn't necessarily mean that it has to be on a two-acre lot. We can, we could add, you could do a fourth unit on your one-acre lot, and that's your bonus unit. And so you can deed-restrict that, right? We could, we could come up with other ways.
Do a lot of things, but that's not what we've approved. We've approved bonus ADUs only on two-acre lots.
Yes, the, the state has changed the way ADUs work.
So you can have six ADUs on a one-acre lot?
Four, is it? Five units total.
It's three right now.
Three right now?
Three units total or three ADUs?
Three ADUs plus a single-family home. And then you can go beyond that as a local jurisdiction if you choose. And that's what we did with the two-acre lots. The issue that has come up from 2024 that's relatively new is there was a state law that said anything in a, anything published by HCD as guidelines is tantamount to law. And HCD published a guideline on ADUs that says you can't do deed restrictions. No exception, no qualification, that that only applies to state-mandated ADUs. So what we're relying here is our interpretation that you can deed-restrict an ADU that's not necessarily subject to the state's mandated program.
So then I have a question on that. So if there's no deed restriction or no way for you to know that these properties are actually being used for anything other than a pool house, how do they, how do they get counted in the number over, over time?
That is because of the town's self-reported voluntary survey that we collect every time we issue permits on ADUs or we get ADU applications.
Okay.
And that, and that's under a tax.
It's the honor system.
Yeah, I know. I, I know it's the honor system now, but that holds up for another year before everybody realizes that that's just.
So, so I have, I have a question that may kind of end this discussion. The, the whole purpose of number four was to discuss if we could implement a fee in such a way to generate enough money to build housing, either of our owner, more likely at the college. It's starting to sound to me like we can't because, as you said, everybody's going the ADU route. It gives them extra square footage, everybody wants extra square footage. And if that way, if there's no way to, to impose a fee with that given, we're wasting our time talking about it. Are you telling me there's no way to make all new construction? Because that's where we got to get to. All new construction, whether it's a teardown or a vacant lot, some modest fee that, over the many hundreds and thousands of square feet that we build, will generate significant capital so we can find help, so we can build affordable housing?
What I'm saying doesn't preclude that, you could do that.
But that's a tax.
Yeah.
So what, so how do we, how do we do the tax?
The vote.
It has to be passed.
You got to have a vote.
Well, it's to get a tax.
Residents vote. So you're saying that we can't say you have to pay if you don't get an ADU? And we can't say you have to pay if you can't be deed-restricted? Did I understand that? And that the only thing we can do is impose a tax? But in order to get a tax, we have to go back to the public?
No, we can do exactly what we're talking about. Any new development on a vacant lot, you either build an ADU or you pay an in lieu fee. You can set that up to happen, and if somebody doesn't build an ADU.
You either build two ADUs, it's the second ADU, right? That's what Mona said. The first ADU, you can't put the.
We're talking, deed restrictions aside. If we're not going to do a deed restriction, you either build the ADU and report to us or you pay the in lieu fee.
So we can do that one.
No deed restriction involved.
Well, everybody builds an ADU. Right now, without paying, without the threat of, or pay the.
Vice Mayor has her, she's been so polite.
So orderly.
So orderly.
You can do that.
They're going to give the Vice Mayor at the floor, please.
Have any single-family homes not built an ADU? I mean, I appreciate that it's a free square footage and so everyone should want to do it because we've created so many beautiful carrots. But I personally am not supportive of a new single-family home being built without any ADUs. And so I, I have been viewing this townwide program as kind of a two-parter. One, it's incentivizing ADU development, which we really need to happen, which maybe we're going to have even higher numbers because apparently you can build so many. And then two, as a way to fund multifamilies. So to me, what I would be supportive of, we did the analysis for vacant lots. I would also be interested in doing analysis of non-vacant lots for demolitions for new single-family homes. So, because if you're building a new home here, it should have an ADU, full stop. I don't, like, the renovations and stuff, that gets really complicated and I'm not sure I'm supportive of that. But to me, if you're demolishing a house, I don't understand why the fee would be different between a 1950s house and a 2013 house because you're building, you're demoing it, so I, whatever. But that's what the analysis would do, so that's, I'm in favor of that.
Councilmember.
So I saw a house that was built by PPG just last summer, and it had an office in the backyard, but not an ADU. So they are being built without ADUs, not very many.
They should pay for that privilege.
I'm sure they could put a bed in there, but it was not, and I specifically asked. And they said, no, it was not an ADU. It was going to be an office, and it was set up as an office with a kitchen, that's it.
Set up as an office, but it had a kitchen?
It had.
And it had a bathroom?
But it had no bedroom. It was no bedroom.
They were real clear, Elizabeth, it was real clear.
I mean, but they're just putting a label on it. But if it has, I mean, if it's a space to put a bed and you've got a kitchen and a bathroom.
I was clear and said, is this going to, do you have an ADU in the back? Is this an ADU? And the answer was, no, it is not. But anyway, it's, you know, it's semantics. But people, a small number of people may not want to build an ADU. You know, they may just decide to have a pool house that doesn't have a bedroom, whatever. But there are some, okay? That's all I'm saying. It's, it's not inconceivable that it would never, that we would never have a house built.
We need to move on here.
Yeah, okay.
I think we've talked about this a lot. Does any member of the planning commission? Just one second, we got, we got to give the planners a chance to speak on this. I know Chair Lane has comments. Whatever I want. Well, we're going to let Mr. DeGolia, Councilmember DeGolia, out close up here.
So let's, let's ignore the vacant lot thing because I agree with what Bob said. This thing only has any value if it applies to all new development, which deals with tear downs, which forces us to go back to BAE and do another analysis. But if the program would be you build an ADU or you pay a fee, it's a worthless program. Everybody's going to build an ADU. Right now, okay, we only build 26 to 28 houses a year. So this is not, unless the fee's pretty high, we're not talking about a lot of money. And of those 26 to 28 houses, I mean, I thought all of them had ADUs because of the free square footage they get with it, which I think is a really important program we put in place. But maybe there's a couple that don't have ADUs. And if they're going to, if, if you're going to say, well, there's going to be a $20,000, or $50,000, or $100,000 fee if you don't build an ADU, they absolutely are going to build an ADU.
Yeah.
Good, we need those.
I don't think it's, I, I, I think it's, we're. I don't think it's, I, I, I think it's, we're not, we're not going to justify the cost to going back to BAE and have them do the analysis for the teardowns.
It's also very good.
I care if you do it, but it's not going to get us where I thought we were trying to get to. It's not going to, it's not going to build a single unit. It's not going to generate any cash for us to build affordable housing anywhere.
So do you have enough information?
What was your perspective?
My perspective?
I'm just counting.
On?
Direction.
Well, I think ADUs should be built, actually, because they're important. And I think most people are going to build them anyway. The bonus ADU, I think is really important also if you have the acreage and, you know, you don't want to clutter up your small parcel with, you know, complete housing. And I think we've got rules and setbacks also. Yes, I'm agree.
So the consensus of the council in terms of direction to the commission with respect to single-family residences, vacant lots is? Yes, do the fee for ADU or no?
Or even a teardown? Yes, new construction.
Why would we go to the effort? It's the value.
Right, so there's still.
I'd say no.
Not consensus here.
I'd say no.
On what? The vacant lot or new construction?
SFR period.
The application to single-family residents, there's no value in it. We're not going to raise any money. The only reason we do it is to raise some money to get something done in Menlo College. And we're not going to raise any money from this.
It will assure that more ADUs are built.
Right, we still need to hit our ADU number.
Yeah. So I think based on that, there's a valid reason to do that.
How much does it cost to go back to BAE and do the analysis for the?
Stephanie, do you want to address that?
Yeah, give me a moment. I think we worked up a special estimate for this little whiteback. I think we're looking somewhere in the range of, you know, seventy-five thousand.
What?
Boy, that's a big raise in five years.
A big dartboard.
Thank you. I'm sure you've, every penny of it. We've kind of been down that road before.
So it's a no.
Well, it's two noes.
Did I understand the seventy-five thousand dollars was for a fee to do an analysis to decide if we wanted to keep the ADU? Is that what that was?
Got it right.
Do I understand that correctly?
It's because of the complexity of the analysis.
And it's a feasibility study with the numbers like we saw for the other things, but now they're extending it. Okay.
And it's required to do the fee?
It's required, the analysis is required to do the fee so that it's not a tax.
Yeah.
Sorry, I, one, one point of clarification on that. Maybe I was looking at the, at the wrong line. So for the, for the supplemental analysis, it looks like we're thinking somewhere sort of in the range of thirty. But we were also sort of assuming that if we were going to add the supplemental analysis, that as part of that, we would be updating the original study rather than having, you know, doing the supplemental analysis based on current values and having the old study be, you know, having the prior study be, you know, based on prior market data. And so the seventy-five thousand-ish was to do both of those pieces of updating the study that we've already done, plus the supplemental analysis of the replacement or addition scenario.
Was it still a no?
Still a no for me.
And that's three with no on SFR.
Thank you, Stephanie. Outside of a tax, what are our other options for creating funding programs for affordable housing in the? Besides donations? Like, I, I mean, like, I hope everyone, like, right? But this is it, right? This is pretty much it and we're saying no to it.
There was, yeah, and.
There's, can I make a comment? Other communities have a fee for if you have an abandoned lot that you let sit abandoned or if you have a house that you abandoned or if you let a lot sit empty. And they will charge you a fee for that. And that kind of fee would go into building housing. And I know even in my neighborhood, we have two of those.
Those are, you have to be a charter city to do that, right?
Pardon me?
Wouldn't that be a charter city thing?
I'm not quite sure what the challenge is. I know it's, it's a sticky one. And I tossed that over to Mona earlier today, but we haven't had a chance to discuss it yet. But it is something we can look at if the council wants us to go that direction.
Councilmember Whitmer.
Yeah, I think that maybe the late penalty, late construction penalty fees of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars or more could go towards that. I mean, we do charge penalty fees and we could allocate those as those who are women to the property. That's some consternation perhaps, but, you know, pulling in two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars, you know, because somebody's gone over the three-year limit and is up to four or five years, I think that that could be.
That's a conversation we could have.
Yes, but not right now. So, okay.
I think we have direction.
I think we're done.
You need a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
My second.